All this meeting of the Sullivan County Delegation Order. First, I would like to ask Representative Rollins to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Representative Rollins. Now, we will go around again with introductions, and I will first of all turn it over to Representative Sullivan, please.
Right, Sullivan, correctly, Sullivan, District One. Course Springfield, Springfield, Grant.
Linda Tanner, Sullivan County, nine. I represent Plainfield, Cornish, Grant, from Newport, Newport, Sanofi, Springfield, Anne, Unity. Thank you.
Representative Sue Gottling, I represent Sullivan District Two, Sanofi and Creighton.
Representative Judy Aaron, I represent Sullivan County District Seven, that's Acworth, Goshen, Langdon, Lemster, and Washington.
Representative Skip Rollins, District Six, Newport, Unity. Representative Stephen Smith, Sullivan Eleven, Acworth, Charleston, Goshen, Langdon, Lemster, and Washington.
Representative Terry Spillsbury, District Eight, Charleston County.
Representative Walt Stapleton, Sullivan County District Five, Claremont Ward Three.
Yeah, Representative John Callum, representing Sullivan Six, Unity, and Newport.
Representative Lee Oxham, representing Plainfield, Cornish, Springfield, and Grant.
Representative Gary Merchant, representing District Four in Sullivan County, which is Ward Two in Claremont, Hampshire.
Representative Andrew O'Hern, Sullivan Three, Ward One.
And again, I'm John Plutier. I have the honor of being the Chair of Sullivan County Delegation this term, and currently I represent Sullivan County District Ten, which comprises the entire city of Cleveland. Thank you, everybody, for the -- I will now turn it over to the -- or the Commissioners, if they want to enter. Commissioner, I guess Nelson, maybe you want -- you and Commissioner Oswood, and why don't you introduce yourselves, and the rest of the county staff?
Ben Nelson, County Commissioner.
Sheriff Frum, County Manager.
Mary Burke, Director of Facilities.
Okay, I think that's it for tonight. Okay, good, very good. Thank you very much for introducing yourselves, everybody.
Sharon Callen is manning the board back at headquarters in Cleveland.
Okay, yeah, we don't want to forget Sharon Callen. Thank you very much for that reminder, Commissioner Nelson. All right, and, okay, let's move on to item number two. Review and approve June 28, 2022, fiscal year 2023 convention meeting minutes. I don't know if everybody has had a chance to review the minutes that you should have received via email, and I think I know some of the -- some of you have asked for corrections, and I assume those corrections have been made. So, if everything's all right, I will now entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the June 28, 2022 delegation meeting minutes.
Motion to accept.
Motion by -- to accept by Representative Merchant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative Gottling. Are we ready for the vote? Questions or comments? Voice vote, okay?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the June 28, 2022 Sullivan County delegation budget convention meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes had it, the minutes are approved. Next item. This is an item that was tabled at the last delegation meeting of June 28. The authorized acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated funds, and we had a motion, and we tabled it, so if we're going to discuss this, I will need -- have to add -- I will need a motion to remove this item from the table, please.
Motion to remove it.
Okay, motion by Representative Merchant to remove this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Representative Spillsbury. Okay, I don't know, Representative Merchant, do you want to lead off?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Jarrett.
Okay, oh, you're welcome.
Hold on, you can take a vote to bring it up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And it has to be a roll call, please, because you need two-thirds.
What's that? Okay, two-thirds, okay. I thank you very much, Representative O'Hern, for that reminder, and this needs to be a roll call. All right, okay, so we're going to need a roll call to take this item off the table that needs a two-thirds. We're all here, so I believe that takes nine votes. Okay, so we're all ready.
Majority.
Majority, okay.
Majority, okay, I stand corrected. The Deputy Speaker is here, so.
Yeah, he speaks.
It's a good thing I've got the Deputy Speaker here. Okay, are we ready for the vote? Okay, Clerk, will please call the roll.
Representative Aaron.
Yes.
Representative Callen.
Yes.
Representative Gottling.
Yes.
Representative Merchant.
Yes.
Representative Ochsingham.
Yes.
Representative Rollins.
No.
Representative Smith.
Yes.
Representative Spillsbury.
Yes.
Representative Stapleton.
Yes.
Representative Tanner.
Yes.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
The Chair.
Yes.
Well, this is one more.
Okay, and the motion is carried by a 12 to 1 roll call vote. Okay, so, I don't know who wants -- either Representative Merchant, or --
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett.
You're welcome.
I went back and listened to the discussion we had, which was very vibrant and informative, and we had discussions and a motion to divide the question, which I believe was tied, and I would like to come back with a subsequent resolution, a subsequent amendment, if you will, for the delegation to consider, so, but may pass this out.
Okay, you're going to pass it out now, thank you.
Oh, sure.
Can we have an amendment?
So, do you want?
Okay, we removed something. I assume any item that we removed from the table, as I understand it, can -- is open to amendment if the majority approves.
Correct.
I believe that's correct.
That's my understanding, but I'll defer to the Deputy Chair -- Deputy Speaker, sorry, to amend the motion. Representative Smith.
I do not recall if there was a pending motion. So, the motion to divide failed?
Tied.
That's failed.
Good.
But prior to that, there was a motion for amendment. I don't remember what happened with that.
Yeah, I had something I would like to give.
Thank you. I think it was only tabled.
Well, that's just to be sure we've got our heart in the procedure.
Motion to divide, period. There. It was part B.
Yeah.
That tied. Part A passed, part B tied.
I stand for it. So, in saying that, what it went back to do was to revisit the resolution. The intent of the resolution is not at all to bind the Commissioners, that is not the intent at all. We all have agreed over many meetings that the number one priority of this delegation -- I repeat, the number one priority of this delegation has been to fund the nursing home project. We want to take care of the seniors. That was the number one priority. We have gone to the federal delegation seeking funds, we've gone to the state seeking funds, based upon that being our priority. We stated it federally, we have stated it statewide. What this amendment simply does is take those monies and those funds that we all agreed that should be earmarked and allocated to nursing project to support the project, to support our seniors, to be sure that they have a place to go. That's all this does. It just codifies into a resolution everything we agreed to. So, in saying that, what it simply states is that ARPA money, or money which come through the state, through the coronavirus state and local fiscal relief funds, which is what the state receives, that they are received directly or indirectly, that we are putting our stamp of approval saying to all of us, we firmly believe in what we said, we want to support this project, we want our seniors to have a place to go. That's all we're saying. Nothing short of that. So, I will make a motion on the floor to approve the amendment, if I can have a second, but we have a discussion on this based upon that.
No more than a second.
A second, okay. Okay, who made the -- no, you made the motion.
I'll make the motion.
And Representative Gottling made the second, or Representative --
No, 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 I have a question.
Question, okay, go ahead, please, Representative Aaron. Question of Representative Merchant.
My question is, how is this different from the original motion that is -- the motion that we always approve after our budget sessions? And with your motion, what is it that you're -- what problem is it that you're trying to solve?
Well, the problem I'm trying to solve, Representative Aaron, thank you for the question, by the way, is that last year, and I'll read the minutes. Discussion, Representative Merchant asked if this motion includes or excludes the ARPA money coming into this year for the 4.1 million next year. County Commissioner Frum confirmed that they receive these funds, but spending them requires a supplemental appropriation. He confirmed the first half of the ARPA funds arrived, and the second half is yet to arrive. He also noted that the ARPA money is not a grant, and therefore the motion relates to grants. Subsequent to that, I have learned, and we all did, that we determined that ARPA funds were in fact grants and therefore exempt from this resolution. And I want to be clear that we, as a delegation, are going to stand behind what we said and put that money towards the nursing home, and not have someone misinterpret it. I think our seniors deserve that, don't you?
With all due respect.
Okay, yes, go ahead, please, Representative.
May I?
Yep.
With all due respect, Representative Merchant, I believe any of the ARPA funds, any other unanticipated funds that come to Sullivan County Board of Commissioners, any other monies, whether it be grants that they apply for, the ARPA funds that they have, any other monies that come to them. I believe that they -- these -- the three men that are serving as our County Commissioners are men of integrity, are elected officials who are beholden to their constituents, and the taxpayers in this county, and I believe that they will do the best to their ability to spend whatever funds come to this county in the most judicious way possible. I don't believe that it is our place to tell them what to spend, when to spend it, and how to spend it. I don't agree with micromanaging the County Commissioner's job.
In all due respect, Representative Aaron, this does not tie the hands of anything else that comes into the county. If they want to go out and get grants beyond this, they're totally exempt from it. All we're talking about is the ARPA money and the state funds that are coming in to support the project, and the federally delegated monies that we went to, and earmarked with the Senator Sheehan. That's all it's doing.
Yes, sir, Representative Sullivan, followed by Representative Aaron, please.
Just a question, I -- maybe I've seen this term before, but I've forgotten. The Corona state and local fiscal relief funds, can you -- can somebody tell me what that is?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
That is a subset of the ARPA funds, and I kind of wanted to be sure that when the resolution was written, that we don't have a misinterpretation of the terminology.
Would that be the Gopher funds?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Representative Aaron, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I believe that the original motion that we had before us, the motion to authorize acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated funds, is sufficient in this case, and I don't believe that we need to make any other kinds of resolutions or amendments to that original motion, because I believe that the people who are serving this county are doing the best by the taxpayers. And I think anyone who would support this resolution, it's a slap in the face to our Commissioners, and I will not be supporting it.
Thank you, Representative Aaron. Representative Spillsbury, please.
Support the resolution. And as amended, to me, this is completely non-controversial. I think it's extremely unfortunate that it's being characterized as a test of our view of Mrs. integrity. Personally, speaking only for myself, it's not, and I think it's a rhetorical misfortune that it's been characterized that way. Here's what is going on. The statutes, our RSAs, place the authority to deal with these funds in the hands of the delegation. That's the law. The statute allows us to delegate those to the Commissioners, and it's become, I gather, a longstanding tradition to do that by the underlying resolution that we're proposing to amend. Okay, so, in our judgment, it has become comfortable and familiar to delegate, and I remain comfortable with that notion, so the resolution should go forward. But the amendment simply takes off that delegation list three specific grants that are all intended for the nursing home. It's the 7 million remaining uncommitted from the two years of ARPA grants, the funds that Gopher is assigning for the project, and the 2 million that Senator Sheehan has had earmarked. So, if we're all in agreement, then why don't we just all nod yes, those are going to the nursing home, and nobody's integrity is challenged.
Thank you, Representative Sullivan. Representative Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I've served on this delegation for 12 years through various representatives and Commissioners, and controlled by both parties, and this has never been necessary before. Nobody's given me a compelling reason why it's necessary now. We have a commitment from the Commissioners, who have stated publicly that they understand we want this money used for the nursing home. They are responsible to their constituents, and have agreed, and their constituents, they have districts, but they got to run countywide. Two of them up for reelection now. Having said that, I have known Commissioner Nelson for, I think, 14 years, Commissioner Osgood as well, George Hebert a number of years. When they give their word, I believe them. We're supposed to work together, not use enforcement tactics to make them do what they already agreed to do. I worry about the future of how we're going to work in county government if, all of a sudden, we have to, you know, use legal technicalities or enforcement measures to gain cooperation. It's better when Commissioner Hebert, the Chair, said, "We hear you, and that's what we're going to do, and if anything else comes up, we're going to talk to you." That's good enough for me. I don't need this, we've never needed it before, nobody's given me a compelling reason today, and I will not support it.
Thank you, Representative Smith. Anybody else? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, Representative Rollins, please.
Yes, I'd agree with Representative Aaron, Representative Smith, they've said most of what I want, and I see -- to me, I see this as an overreach. We have an agreement with the Commissioners that they are bound to this and that they will support this. I don't see the need for it. As the other two Representatives have said, I think this is going to divide the Commissioners from the delegation, and I think it's going to make for extremely bad feelings, and I just -- I just don't see the purpose of why we have to do this, why we can't trust our Commissioners. This will set a very bad precedent down the road. This will set a precedent for future legislations or delegation meetings in this county, and it could get -- it could get very out of control. I think everyone should be allowed to do their job, the Commissioners should do their job, we should trust them. I believe that, as a delegation, we should trust them, and I believe that we should do our jobs. So, I see no purpose in this amendment whatsoever, other than to divide the two political divisions, Commissioners and delegation. I wish -- I wish this would never -- and I will not support it. I will not support it.
Representative Rollins, other -- okay, Representative Callum, please.
So, as maybe the only representative here who also in the past has served as a County Commissioner, I feel that this is unnecessary, and I will not vote for it.
Okay, thank you, Representative Callum. Further questions? Yes, Representative Stapleton, please.
The last sentence of the resolution proposed, use of these non-exempt funds shall require supplemental appropriation subject to approval of the delegation. This is a make-work-and-create-delay provision, that we've already had enough make-work-and-delay that's cost us a lot of money and stalled this project in its tracks, and I think that's not only useless, but counterproductive, and so I will not support the amendment, but I would support the original resolution.
Thank you, Representative Stapleton. Representative Aaron, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would suggest, and I would hope, that we could have a withdrawal of any amendments or resolutions to the original motion. I would like to see that happen and have us vote on the original motion once again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative Aaron. I don't know, that would be up to Representative Merchant, but.
No.
Okay, no? Okay, so, any other questions or comments? Yes, Representative Tanner, please.
Thank you. I see this motion as encumbering funds, and I am disturbed, really, that it's become, quote, "a slap in the face to the Commissioners." That's not the intent, my intent, at all, and I find that unacceptable to question motivation. So, I feel as though this is just encumbering funds, and I think it's done quite often, and why it's already a trust issue, I just -- I don't see it.
Thank you, Representative Tanner. Any other questions or comments from the delegation before we vote on this amendment? Okay, are we -- understand the parliamentary -- and I believe we're going to vote on the Representative Merchant's amendment first. Do we want a roll call vote on this amendment?
Yes.
I assume we do. Okay, so is everybody ready? Okay, will the Clerk, Representative O'Hern, please call the roll?
Representative Aaron.
No.
Representative Callen.
No.
Representative Gottling.
Yes.
Representative Merchant.
Yes.
Clerk votes no. Representative Ochsingham.
Yes.
Representative Rollins.
No.
Representative Smith.
No.
Representative Spillsbury.
Yes.
Representative Stapleton.
No.
Representative Tanner.
Yes.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Seven to six?
Seven to six, all right. The amendment passes. Thank you very much, everybody. Now, we are back to the main motion as amended. Any other further questions or comments about this motion, please?
Shame on you, all.
Excuse me, I feel that's very inappropriate.
All right, yes, okay, I understand we feel strongly about this, but if we had just tried to confide our comments, I know it's very upsetting, but we made the votes for various reasons, and I think based on our consciences, so I think it wasn't intended personally against any -- I think it's just a disagreement between the two branches of government, legislative, which the delegation is, and the executive branch, and I don't, you know, that's -- yes.
Would you redo the count, please?
Okay.
I thought I had eight.
Check the count, the Clerk will call.
Pardon me? There's.
Seven yeses, one, two, three, four.
Could you review who those were, please?
The yeses?
Uh-huh.
Gottling, Merchant, Ochsingham, Spillsbury, Tanner, Sullivan, Plutier.
And the last was?
Plutier, the Chair.
So, Andy didn't vote.
Oh, you didn't vote. Excuse me.
He voted no.
Oh, you voted no, thanks.
I think everybody voted, we were all here, so is everybody clear on the vote?
Yes.
Any other further questions about the vote before we go on? The amendment is approved, now we go to the main motion. Okay? And I'm sorry if it got heated, but it's just an agreement between the executive and legislative. Okay, now we go to the motion as amended, please.
Make the motion as amended.
Representative Merchant, okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Representative Sullivan, okay? All right, any other further questions or comments about this motion as amended? Anybody want this amended motion read before we take a -- I assume we want a roll call vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, if everybody's ready, will the Clerk, Representative --
Motion read.
All right, okay, yes, Representative Stapleton. Okay, so can -- we have the amended motion, I believe that's in front of you, right? I mean, pursuant to the New Hampshire RSA 24:14, the delegation authorizes the Sullivan County Board of Commissioners to apply for, receive, and expend federal and/or state grants and/or unanticipated funds that become available during the course of fiscal year 23, and also to accept and expend funds from any other governmental unit or private source to be used for purposes for which Sullivan County may legally appropriate money, and the expenditures of such funds shall be exempt from restrictions on over expenditures of appropriations under RSA's 24:14 and 24:15, provided that this exemption shall not apply to unspent American Rescue or ARPA funds received directly or indirectly in either fiscal '21 or '22, or that may be received in fiscal year '23, and that it does not apply to any coronavirus state and local fiscal relief funds, SLF RF, received directly or indirectly in fiscal year '23, to the $2 million federal funds earmarked for the nursing home. Use of these non-exempt funds shall require supplemental appropriation subject to approval of the delegation. Is -- okay, that's the amended motion. Are there any questions or comments about this before we go to a vote on this item as now amended? And the motion, again, I think Representative Merchant, is that correct, and Representative Gottling, second. I'm sorry, Sullivan, I stand corrected. Are we ready for the vote? Okay, Representative O'Hern, could you please call the roll?
Representative Aaron.
No.
Representative Callen.
No.
Representative Gottling.
Yes.
Representative Merchant.
Yes.
Clerk votes no. Representative Ochsingham.
Yes.
Representative Rollins.
No.
Representative Smith.
No.
Representative Spillsbury.
Yes.
Representative Stapleton.
No.
Representative Tanner.
Yes.
The Vice Chair.
Yes.
The Chair.
Yes. Okay, the --
Seven to six.
And how -- what is the vote, please?
Seven to six.
Seven to six, okay, and the motion passes on a seven to six roll call vote. Thank you. All right, let's move on. Now, we will have the public hearing to authorize the bond for the Sullivan County Healthcare Renovation Project. So, I think we're going to have the public hearing, and I don't know if any members of the public wish to speak of, you know, and I don't know, and that includes if the Commissioners, I think, want to speak, yes. Commissioner Nelson, please.
Somebody made the comment that this is a disagreement between two branches of government. Please leave us out of this. This is what we agreed to, we told you we agreed to it, we haven't deviated from it. The disagreement and ill will was between members of the delegation, so please leave the Commissioners out of it. I mean, that wasn't the right statement, it's between two branches of government. The vitriol I heard was between you folks, not between you and us.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Nelson. Okay, further question, I mean, public hearing has begun. Is there anybody who wishes to speak either for or against this motion? I'm sorry, go ahead.
There is no motion. Basically, what I'd like to do on behalf of the Workgroup is lay out exactly what the Workgroup is recommending and how we came to that conclusion. And I guess, as a preface, I'm going to say to all of us, let's keep our eyes on the prize. We've got a nursing home that really needs renovation, and we're closing in on this thing, so I just ask you all to -- So, I just ask you all to keep your eyes on the prize. So, Derek, are you able to put this on the screen?
I could have to find the file. I used to have it down somewhere.
Okay, I, that's fine. There's a document labeled number five in our packet. That's the one I'm looking at. That's what I'll be going through. First thing that the work group did is we tried to come up with a current estimated projected cost for the project. As we'll all recall, I hope, in January of 2022, we had a consultant work with us and Mary also sort of checked the numbers. And at that point in January, the conclusion was that we had an approximate $57 million project. It has not gone out to bid yet, so we do not have a rock-solid number, but the best estimate at that moment was $57 million. Basically, Mary has been speaking to Warren Street, and, you know, time has passed and inflation is unfortunately ramping up. And the question to Warren Street was what kind of inflation escalators might we want to look at? And the, what we were told was that we should look at a 5% to 10% inflation escalator. And this inflation factor of $6 million is on the high side of that. But I, we felt as a work group that that was an appropriate inflation factor to include. And so our best estimate at the moment for the total cost of the project is $63 million. Again, has to go out to bid before we will know for sure, but that's our best number at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Representative Sullivan.
Wait, not done?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, I need to interrupt you.
Second is the funding sources as of June 2022. We have several sources of funding. Some of them are relatively new to the scene. We have a federal budget through Senator Gene Shaheen of $2 million. We have $7 million remaining in county ARPA funds. We additionally have $5 million in capital reserves. And the work group discussed this and concluded that we shouldn't take it all, that some money ought to be left for other capital reserve needs. And so out of the 5 million, we are considering 3 million for funding the nursing home. And then there's the ARPA funds through Gopher. Apparently Representative Merchant came up with a better term for that, but these are the funds we've been talking about, that we are getting through the Gopher Committee. And what we have come to understand is that the, this money would be limited to 40% of the total cost of the project. So, 40% of the $63 million is $25 million, I think 25.2. But basically, we've got $25 million commitment from the, from the Gopher Committee. So, the total funding sources at this point is $37 million that we have in hand, well, not in hand, but basically we're either in hand or anticipated. So, simple math, you take 63 million, subtract 37 million, we came up with 26 million. So, that is the work group recommendation. I will say we had a bit of a Goldilocks moment, that some members of the work group felt that we ought to go a little lower than this. Other member, other parts of the committee thought that we ought to go a little higher. But the number that passed the committee was $26 million, which is, as best we know right now, the precise, I shouldn't use a word like precise, the best estimate that we've got as to the money that we would need for a bond. So, that is the recommendation that the work group has made. So, with that, I will turn it back to the chair.
Okay, thank you, Representative Sullivan. Questions of Representative Sullivan, please. Representative Merchant, please.
It's not a question, it's more of a comment, if I may. I want to thank and recognize the work of Representative Sullivan and also the people in the work group that put into this. It's been a long journey. I think it's been a cooperative journey, and it's been a collaborative journey. And we're getting closer to the end. And I think it's important that we recognize the work of those individuals, particularly Chairman Sullivan, in leading this group to get us where we are today. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative Merchant. Further questions or comments of Representative Sullivan? Yes, Representative Stapleton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is that $6 million inflation factor just a pure percentage figure, or does it include anything we might have backed out, like furniture, appliances, or other administrative costs like insurance or interest or whatever exists?
The $57 million is the total cost of the project as estimated, including everything. Nothing's been backed out. The $6 million inflation factor is obviously an approximate number. 10% of $57 million would actually be $5,700,000. But again, we're dealing with a lot of unknowns, so the number we picked as an inflation factor is the 6 million. So that, again, this number will get pinned down by the bidding process, but what we need before we do the bidding process is a commitment from this delegation to do the project, which will require a commitment to do a bond. And we got to figure out what number that bond ought to have. So, right now, we're recommending 26 million.
Thank you.
Yes, please continue, Representative Stapleton.
I think that the 9.5238% or whatever it comes out to is entirely defensible, given the circumstances we have with fuel, material, and labor costs going through the roof in the country. So, hopefully, it's even enough, but I think it's fully defensible and should not be a problem, I would anticipate not to be a problem, defending that. And thank you for the work that you've done, representative, on this project and leading it on the work.
Yes, Representative Rollins.
I also want to congratulate Representative Sullivan on doing a wonderful job navigating this. He had a very hard job, you know, dealing with everything. He is spot-on. He listens to everyone, and he's done an excellent, excellent job on that special committee. And I just want everybody to know that as well.
Representative, okay, Aaron, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also would like to echo those sentiments. I think Representative Sullivan has done a superb job commandering and leading this effort, and I appreciate all the work he's put into it, as well as the members of the work group.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Representative, I'm sorry, Representative Oxingham, please.
Yes, I'd like to thank all the members of the working group. I think we've come a long way from where we were when the working group was first set up with a wing and a prayer. And I'd like to specifically thank Representative Aaron for her work with Gopher, which was very, very useful, and for bringing that bill before the House wasn't successful, but it made a big difference, and I think it paved the way for maybe in the future similar legislation. So, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yes, Representative Spilsbury, please.
I'd like to get my own private mantra. I'm wondering, Representative Sullivan, could you catch us up on exactly where the state process is? Has it in fact...
Overrun?
Yeah, has it reached the point of being a commitment as such, or is it...
It has, it has been approved by the Joint Fiscal Committee. The, I should say, what's been approved? A $50 million nursing home fund has been approved by the Joint Fiscal Committee. The $50 million nursing home fund has been approved by the Executive Council. We, do we have an application packet yet? We are waiting on Gopher, who's been, from what I understand, desperately trying to spend money, and not necessarily this money. So, essentially, we've not yet put in our application, but all indications have been that, well, this $50 million fund would not exist if it weren't for the Sullivan County Nursing Home Project. I believe that what they did was smart, that they put, rather than simply giving 25 million to Sullivan County and telling everybody else, it sucks to be you, they instead created the fund, knowing that we had a shovel-ready project that was ready to use the funds. And other nursing homes might have smaller projects that could expend the rest of that 50 million. So, it was a smart move. It avoided animosity between counties, but basically, we've got the application process to go through, but we know the formula is 40%, so we know the number is probably 25 million. I say probably because that's based on the $63 million total cost. If the cost comes in at 57 million, there's no inflation whatsoever, then we'll probably have to give some of the money back, but we'll be happy to be spending less. But I think, Derek, is that an accurate portrayal of where we're at?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I don't understand if they said no animosity. There was a little bit of one from other counties, but it was...
And the governor has made pretty certain that his thumb is on the scale. You know, he's, as close as he can promise that his 25 million does.
So, thumb on the scale means he's supporting this program?
Yes, and the 25 million, so his thumb is on the scale. And Gopher does stand for governors, whatever.
Yeah, I forget the acronym.
Yeah, the first word is governor that I can remember.
Okay, yeah. Okay, Representative Tanner, please.
I too would like to thank the work of the group and everybody that's on it for doing a great job to this point. My question is, it sounds to me like these are all, like, several parts of this funding stream and also the projected costs are all moving targets. Is that, and that some of them, like, what we would expend in a bond or encumber in a bond depends a lot on the total cost of the project, which then also depends on how much money we get from Gopher. It just seems like there's a lot of moving parts to this. Am I seeing it right?
I wouldn't say a lot of moving parts. We've got the 2 million from the feds, 7 million from ARPA, 3 million from capital reserves. That's money we've got.
Okay, yes, okay.
The $25 million is, needs to go through an application process, but we've gotten all kinds of good vibes from Gopher and the governor about that money coming through. The $63 million total project cost, we've got that number because a year ago, when we were sitting here, we agreed that it would be a good idea to hire a consultant to come up with some kind of number, because we all recalled, or at least most of us did, the earlier experience when we were expecting a low number and got a much higher number. And we wanted to avoid that experience again, so essentially, we had the consultant come in. So, do we know what this project costs? No. Do we have a pretty good idea? I think so. I think we've got a pretty good idea, and I think the, the inflation factor is a responsible thing to add in, so.
Just, can I?
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead, please, Representative.
It seemed to me like, and I know the Gopher funds, I feel as though they're committed to us, so that's no problem, but it seems like the 40% of that project cost, when you said we may end up giving money back, it just seems like there's a couple of, all those things kind of affect what we actually bond for this program. Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
Basically, if we could have a rock-solid cost estimate or cost determination for this project, we'd all feel a lot better.
We would.
I mean, it's much better knowing exactly what it'll cost. It's not as good, but it's pretty good to have a good idea of what it's going to cost.
Right.
So, I think we've got a good idea. And I, another discussion piece we had earlier in the process was taking multiple bonds. You know, take, take two bonds and, you know, that way you can sort of cover the unexpected. The very unattractive part about doing that now, and we may need to take another bond for a small amount later down the road, but if we do like half of it now and half of it later, we're probably going to pay a lot higher interest, on the other hand, in the second half. And I don't think that's responsible activity. If we, if we're off on some of our estimates and we have to go back for some small amount, that's what we'll have to do, but...
Okay, all right. Yes, I'm sorry, Representative Aaron, please.
Just a point of clarification. Are we still within the public hearing?
Yeah, okay, because obviously, I think the public hearing, because it's sort of, no one came to, you know, from the public, unfortunately, which is too bad, either for or against. So, I think probably I should have clarified that the public hearing part is over...
Let's find out if there's any further questions.
Any further questions, yeah. From, okay, the delegation, please.
Yes, Representative Sullivan, very much appreciated your very clear testimony. I think on that. My follow-up question, though, is do we have any smoke signals from the state about the timing of their decision?
Derek, do you have any? I mean, it seems like they've been not moving lightning fast and getting this application to us, so any idea when it's coming?
They originally said end of July, so they still have, I guess, a couple days. And before the...
Not correct. I did speak to Deputy Director Hageman last week, and he said that they were peddling hard to get it out as soon as possible. And then after we get it, it'll take us some time to put that together. I suspect it'll not be something that's done in 20 or 30 minutes, but probably a couple of days. And then it'll go back up. We can probably expect a six to eight week process to get it re-approved. The actual grant funding to us would be, also need to be approved by governor and council. If there are any questions about our application, that could slow it down if there's any back and forth, so.
And I guess the conclusion to that timeframe is we can't afford to wait. We really, we, it would be nice if that money was in hand, again, because that would be one more, you know, thing we've got nailed down. But I think at this point, we have to go with the belief that the money will be forthcoming, and if it's, I mean, what, what we need to do is we need to get this thing out to bid. We can't get this thing out to bid until we've gotten a commitment from this delegation that we're going to do this thing. And that commitment comes in the form of dollars. If we, if we can send the message that we have committed to a $63 million sum, we believe strongly that that will encourage subcontractors to be confident that this project is a going thing. So, we just, if we wait until everything's done, it'll be, we'll be another two years down the road, which we can't really do.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Nelson, please.
The bond is approved, and if for something reason the 25 million disappears, we're not committed to build it even, you know, we either build something for 25 million less or pay the bond off. You know, it's not like the 25 million doesn't come, we're not going to go back to the taxpayers and look for another 25 million bucks.
And the type of bond that we're looking at, there are two kinds of bonds you can purchase. One is the twice-a-year opportunity, which is sort of a group bonding, and my understanding is that those cannot be prepaid. So, if you, if we went with that kind of bond, once we commit to it and take the bond, we've got the bond, we got to pay it off over the course of 25, 29 years. But if, if we take the second type of bond, which is what we anticipate doing, because we're a little bit off schedule anyways, it allows us to do two things. If something happens that, where we've got, money falls from the sky, and we realize that we didn't need 25, or $26 million in bonds, we can pay a portion of it back early. If 10 years from now, or five years from now, the interest rates that are creeping upwards now go back to where... upwards now go back to where they used to be, we can refinance the bond. We can pay it off and refinance it, get a new bond at a lower interest rate, which would save the county a great deal of money. So this gives us some opportunity, and it also makes the idea of taking the full twenty-six million now, the same kind of bond, I think, more attractive, so.
Okay, all right, Representative Merchant, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to be clear and understand the process, and I want to follow up with Commissioner Nelson. And for whatever reason, I don't foresee it happening, but if it does, we need to bear for it, but for whatever reason the application, whatever process with the money from Gopher doesn't materialize, if I understand it correctly, when we sign on as a delegation or as a county, and we engage the project manager to go out for bids, we're basically ensuring to them that we are standing behind those bids. So if the bids come in at forty-five or fifty million dollars, and the money doesn't come from the state, we're still obligated to pay off that twenty-five million dollars, because we are basically putting our approval on those bids. Is that correct? I'm looking at...
I don't believe so until the contract's signed.
But the contracts won't be signed.
Exactly, until we get the money.
So...
The contracts will not be signed until we have all the money in hand.
Okay, so if the contracts won't be signed until we have all the money in hand, are we doing this prematurely? Because what I heard was, maybe I'm wrong about this, we haven't received the application for applying to the state, that still has to go through a process, that's going to take us until probably September or October. So if we're going to say we're not going to commit to the project in the contracts until we have the money in hand, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to put a shovel in the ground until we have money in hand.
Okay.
You know, the idea of getting this bond approved is, A, that giant sucking sound you hear is interest rates going up as we listen. So that's why we need the bond approved and to get that money now. And it shows a huge commitment, you know, no, it's not signed in cement, but it's a huge commitment to the projects going forward, and contractors will sharpen their pencil. I mean, it's a lot of time and work to do a bid project on any of these subs. So it gives them a huge, not a hundred percent confidence, but ninety-five percent confidence the project's going ahead. But it's, you know, a bid is not a guarantee that you're going to get the money. People put in bids, you know, company A, B, C put in a bid, and it's not done until a contract is signed.
Followed. Yes, Representative Merchant.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Nelson. What I also heard was that if we go out for another guaranteed maximum price because of the market conditions we have, that most of the people who are bidding on something will only hold the bids for, for maybe at best, five to six weeks. The last time, when we had a better conditions and markets were favorable, they'd hold the bids for probably four to six months. What I heard before, that the bids most likely only be guaranteed for approximately four to six weeks. So if we go out for guaranteed maximum price now, and it comes in in September, we don't have the assurance of the money until October or November, I'm just looking at the timeline to be sure that we're lining up everything correctly and not having an aha moment where all of a sudden, something went through the cracks. That's all I'm asking for.
Representative Sullivan, please.
I guess I would suggest that the commissioners work with the builder to make sure that the timing of bidding, if we need to lay the bidding to guarantee that we've got the ARPA funds, then that's what we have to do. But if, and they will know better exactly how long subcontractors will hold the bids for. It is a limited length of time, so we wouldn't want to have the bids done, ready to sign contracts, and then say, "Well, it's going to be another three months." That would be a mistake, so I will trust that the commissioners and the builder they work with will keep that from happening.
Representative Aaron, please. Okay, you wanted to respond first, I'm sorry, then I'll run to you, answer.
The funding has to be secured first, before the GMP is secured. That's the sequence of events. So we have to get the bond squared away, the Gopher process has to be completed, and then that's when we'll pursue the GMP. The opinion of Bond Counsel, which is a big part of the, if we do indeed go for the twenty-six million, she has to state with confidence that we have all the elements of this funding stack lined up, which means, doesn't mean that we necessarily have to have the governor and council contract signed, but she has to have enough assurance that it's going to be signed. So we will be synchronizing, those two timelines are going to be on a parallel track over the next six to eight weeks. So if she doesn't express confidence that we're going to get the twenty-five-odd million from the state, she can't write her opinion that we have all the funding secured for this project to move forward, then the bond bank won't issue us the bond. So there's a few layers to the cake, but we're working them in parallel, which I think in the interest of time is the right thing to do, but we do have to let those, parallel lines do have to converge for us to have demonstrated confidence, not only to the bond bank, but also to our bidders, that we do indeed have all the money that we said we needed.
Okay, yeah, Representative Aaron, please just be patient, Representative Sullivan.
Because I understand we're having a hearing tonight, and now we have to have a vote within fourteen days to approve the bond or not. But I'm hearing you say that the bond attorney may not give us the go-ahead to have that vote.
No, she's not going to stop you from having a vote, it's just that it's, after the vote, it's still the sixty-day process to get the bond package completed through the bond bank. So we won't have the twenty-six million in the bank, still takes a couple of months for that to happen. While that's happening, all these other processes will also take place.
And if that process is ongoing, she's got sixty days, are we confident that we will have an answer from Gopher within sixty days of, or seventy-five days from now?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable estimate based on all the information that we have at this time. And her opinion will come at the very end, so it can let all those other factors play out, and then she can kind of come on the top, even at the eleventh hour, and issue an opinion that will accompany our package, and that's when we go to the market to actually make a transaction.
And I guess I would also suggest that having a hard deadline might motivate Gopher to get things done.
Representative Aaron, thank you for your patience, followed by Representative Tanner.
Sure, thank you, guys. So I just don't want to have clarification whether or not we're still doing a public hea, if we're still...
Okay. If you may clear, I will close unless there's an objection. Anybody else from the public or any of the commissioners want us, okay, I'm going to close this public hearing on the authorizing the bond for Sullivan County Healthcare. Thank you very much, Representative Aaron, for that clarification, it's just a little the way things going, I was expecting more people, so.
Okay, so Chairman Cludier, then with all the discussion that we have already had, I'd like to make a motion, propose a motion, and pass this down to you, also to you.
Okay. Representative Tanner, I mean, I don't...
I go.
She wants to go.
So I'd like to make a motion, you can pass this down, to approve the Sullivan County Nursing Home renovation project and authorize the Sullivan County Commissioners to bond up to twenty-six million dollars for the Sullivan County Nursing Home renovation project in accordance with language, rules, and procedures required by our bond attorney and the bonding process in order to begin work on this project. I think with all the information that we discussed already today during this session in the public hearing and at our working group, that we have all the information that we need as a delegation to make this motion and to approve this project and move forward. We've been working on this for the past four years already, we already have good information about how much money this is, project is going to cost, how much our funding stacked, where the different pieces of the funding stack will be, and I think it's about time that this body comes together, makes a decision, approves this project, and moves forward.
Thank you, Representative Aaron. Do I have a second on that? Uh, seconded by Representative Rollins. So now we are debating, yes, Representative Tanner, I'm sorry, if you wish to speak, I don't know.
I would just like to, you said that the twenty-six million was kind of a Goldilocks figure, that...
That was just right.
Which meant that there were some people that...
Too far, too cold, just right.
Right, right, but you talked about how on the committee, on the work group, there were some people that thought it should be more and some people that thought it should be less, and I would like to hear some of the issues around that. You know, why twenty-six million instead of twenty-five or twenty-four or twenty-eight? Why, why, was it just that as you might, well, I'm not going to answer my own question, go ahead.
I'm not comfortable, I supported the twenty-six million, so I am not comfortable speaking for other people as to why they felt the way they felt. So Commissioner Hebert is not here tonight, and he was, he's part of the group, and he was not supportive of the twenty-six, so I don't know what you do about that.
Okay, yes, Representative Rollins, please, followed by Representative Spilsbury.
There was a discussion between going twenty-four million, draining everything including capital reserves, or leaving the, leaving the capital reserves in place, leaving five million dollars, okay? I asked, offered a compromise to leave two-hundred million in the capital reserves, okay? Two, two million, sorry, thank you, Judy, two million in the capital reserves, so that we had money available if we needed it. And to me, that was a compromise between leaving the five million in capital reserves and draining it. It's a little bit less than half, but it was a compromise so that we could get this project started. And I think to be fiscally responsible, we need to leave at least two million dollars in the capital reserve, so if something comes up, then the commission is, the delegation, everybody, we have the money to take care of those issues. We cannot drain it down to zero. So it was a compromise to put it at twenty-six and leaving two million in the capital reserves.
Thank you, Representative Rollins, Representative Tanner.
So is this just, this is just, just the nursing home capital reserve? This is not like a...
No, it's the... It's our capital reserve, it's our capital reserve for everything in the county, right? All the county capital reserve. So it's not just the nursing home, it is the county's capital reserve fund, trying to leave something so if there's an emergency, we can take care of it.
Other questions? Yes, Manager Furman.
Chairman Cludier, if you could just respond to Representative Tanner. I don't mind speaking on behalf of Chair Hebert, because I was in the meeting. I know he, his position was thirty million was the bond amount that he supported, it's why he voted no on the twenty-six, because he firmly believed in the thirty. Two main reasons why, both related to uncertainty. The first is the uncertainty about the total project cost, and he said, "Well, what if this comes in at sixty-five?" Having a thirty-million-dollar bond would still leave us flexibility to respond to that condition. There was a lot of discussion with the group, and I think the group said, "Well, if we needed more money, we could always reconvene and appropriate more money," and so whatever position a person, you know, wants to view that, that's fine. But for Commissioner Hebert, he just thought thirty would provide that level of flexibility. And the second factor is our operating budget. He is very concerned about how FY23 is going to shake out and what that's going to mean next year as we start to build a budget for FY24. We rolled forward quite a bit of variance because our expenses were lower for a lot of our personnel because of the number of vacancies. We don't expect that to quite come through this year, and so next year, we could have a serious budget concern, and he thought keeping a little bit of ARPA money in reserve would allow us to address that possibility as well. So that was his, the two main points that he was advocating for the thirty million.
Representative Sullivan, please.
This is, I think, for the county manager. As we were leading up to this process, we had a draft bond, a not, bond vote motion that I believe was prepared by the attorney, and it was a bit longer than the motion we're looking at now. And I'm concerned as to whether or not that's a problem, that we're looking at a motion that does not necessarily conform with what the bond attorney might feel we need.
It's a very good point. She was recommending changes as late as yesterday, and it was my understanding there wasn't going to be a vote tonight, so I basically told her, "I don't know that we have to, you know, we're under a serious time crunch to get this buttoned up in preparation for tonight," so.
Representative Sullivan, followed by Representative Rollins.
And I don't disagree, Representative Aaron, with your sentiment that we're probably pretty close to being able to do this, but I am concerned about this, because I know that we were just swapping these documents some, so many months ago, and I want to make sure that when we do this, we do it right, and that we don't end up with a motion that we pass that's not workable, and we'll have to have another vote anyways, so, and I guess I would further suggest, and there's, I'm not on the EFC, so I don't have a dog in that fight, but I know that there is an intent at one point to have the work group take a look at this, make a recommendation, and then have the EFC take a look at this and either confirm that recommendation or come up with their own. But, and then as this developed, and there are reasons why the EFC couldn't meet before now, but there might be some advantage to having gone through this process, because the EFC in its entirety, I mean, we've got two members that are on the work group, but the EFC in its entirety now has heard the discussion, heard the explanation and the rationale behind this, and I would raise that as a second question, as to whether the EFC, if we would benefit from having the EFC vote, meet, review this, and hopefully confirm the intent of the work group, but they would be in a position to make a different recommendation, so.
Okay, Representative Aaron, please, followed by Representative Golling.
Yes, Representative Sullivan, with regard to your concern about the language, this is why I structured this, to say that this is in accordance with language, rules, and procedures required by our bond attorney and the bonding process in order to begin work on the project. So it's sort of, I think, all inclusive of what that language would have been, and I think the intent is to include any specifics that are not included here. And as, so far as the EFC meeting, we, members of the EFC are here, they've heard all the information that the working group has put together. We had, the EFC had a month between the last delegation meeting and this meeting to have gotten together and discussed this and did not. And I feel that since members of the EFC are already here and have heard all the information that was provided during this meeting and the public hearing, that they have enough information to be able to vote on this. We've had plenty of discussion on this, we have beat this project to death, and I think it's about time we make a decision as a body, and that's why I made this motion.
Okay, thank you, Representative Aaron. Representative Golling, please. If you want to speak, I'm sorry, I thought you...
Representative Spilsbury wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Representative, I apologize, Representative Spilsbury, if you want to speak, I appreciate your patience.
I was thinking, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead, please.
So Representative Sullivan, Sullivan... I anticipated both of my two comments, but I'd like to amplify them anyway. An EFC meeting has been noticed properly for Friday. As a member of the EFC, I'm looking forward to that discussion, and I'll be there. And since the EFC, for whatever reasons, hasn't had the opportunity to review it, as Representative Sullivan has suggested, I think it would be premature to vote tonight. The second comment is that I think that the motion as presented to us, although well-intended, is wholly inadequate. I could not vote for and support a motion for a bond approval, especially of this size, that simply says in accordance with language, rules, and procedures required by our bond attorney and the bonding process. That's precisely what we need to know and have in front of us when we take the vote.
Thank you, Representative Spilsbury. Further questions, or Representative Sullivan, please.
I just want to go back to that same point. To vote on a motion that you can't see, I think is irresponsible, and we can see your motion, of course, but to say that we're voting on something like this, and this was a draft, this was going to be modified further, so I think we need to... So I think we need to carefully craft a motion, we need to get that motion, read that motion, and know what we're approving. To vote on something that the, we'll just let the attorneys take care of it, is, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Yes, Representative Stapleton, please.
Representative Sullivan, did I hear you say that that draft that you had in hand was not complete yet? Are there more revisions to come to it?
Say is that the county, or the bond attorney is presently working on a motion that matches circumstances as they exist today. Is that fair?
Yeah, it's probably 95% complete. It's just a few word changes that she wanted to make sure were dialed in. And once I learned on Friday that there was not likely to be a vote tonight, we spoke again on Monday, and she said, "Well, should I have it prepared?" And I said, "Well, I don't think there's going to be a vote." So we're kind of expecting, you know, sometime in August for a vote, so. She's working on it, but she's very busy, so she didn't have it all the way ready.
Thank you. Representative Stapleton, please.
There's a follow-up. I would like to be enlightened as to what the draft contains at the 95% level at this point, at least to be put in mind of thought and understanding of what, what the direction and the concerns were.
I don't know whether we have that, sorry.
This document is from six, nine months ago. It's a long, long time ago, so this, I only held this up for contrast purposes. And it's got blanks on it as well. It hasn't really been, you know, put together. And what would need to go in this are all the numbers that we've been discussing tonight. So that basically it would indicate, as I understand it, where the funding's coming from, what the cost is, and to support the size of the bond. Is that fair?
The version you have is the 3% draft. 95% draft, there are no blanks. She just wanted to look through, and she wanted to also consult with DRA, who also has to review these documents and make sure that the verbiage complied with, with what DRA likes to see. Like, for instance, they never like to see the word "up to." So she was having to finagle, knowing that there's a lot of variability because there are a few moving pieces and parts in this funding stack, and give us the flexibility to secure the total amount of funding without tying our hands. So that was really the last piece of craftsmanship that she was working on, so.
Commissioner Nelson, you were going to add something?
Just from other bond school municipal stuff, the legal verbiage is important.
We spent a lot of time talking about what the, that particular document would look like. And so, I mean, I just, I feel, I guess I would like to ask County Manager Ferland, on Friday, will there be a completed one or will there be an almost completed one?
For sure.
And all we would be doing would be making a recommendation on an amount for bonding. We're not going to be voting on, you know, so.
I have an appointment to speak with her tomorrow morning, and I could just simply say, "Hey, we need it for Friday." I think, I think that's doable, but I'll confirm that tomorrow morning.
Representative Sullivan, please.
Two pieces to this. Number one, based on the discussion we've had, I would respectfully ask whether or not Representative Aaron would consider withdrawing her motion. That said, the second part would be, I would like to make a motion to table.
Second. Okay, so now there is a motion to table, it's a non-debatable motion. As I understand, a motion to table requires a simple majority vote, whereas the bond is going to require a two-thirds vote. So is everybody understand what the motion is? And whenever the clerk is ready, if the clerk, Representative O'Hern, will please call the roll.
Will I second or something else?
Okay, Representative Sullivan, you, okay.
I seconded it.
Oh, seconded, okay. So Representative Sullivan moved, Representative Tanner seconded the motion to table.
Representative Aaron.
No.
Representative Callen.
No.
Representative Golling.
Yes.
Representative Merchant.
Yes.
Representative Boxingham.
Yes.
Representative Rollins.
No.
Representative Smith.
No.
Representative Spillsbury.
Yes.
Representative Stapleton.
No.
Representative Tanner.
Yes.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Yes, it's five noes.
Okay, motion to table is passed. Okay, so the EFC will be meeting on Friday. The other thing, item six on the agenda, review and approve the draft meeting minutes of the work group of July 12th. So I don't know if, Representative Sullivan, you want to do this now?
Yeah, I reviewed these.
Okay, yes, you reviewed those, okay. So I guess you need a motion from someone on the work group, please.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the work group meeting of July 12th, 22nd?
Motion. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Representative...
Second. Representative Aaron, Rollins, are you willing to second?
Yes.
Representative Rollins, are you about to vote? All in favor of approving minutes, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Minutes passed.
Thank you. Any other old business? As I said, the Executive Finance Committee is meeting on Friday, the 29th, at 10:00 a.m. So, I mean, okay.
I believe it would be prudent for us, since the delegation is all here, for us to find the best date in the next 14 days to reconvene. So we do need to vote within 14 days, correct? So let's, let's find a date after Friday, but before the 14 days are up to reconvene and vote on a motion that is provided by the bond attorney.
And I would, before we try to get a date, I'm willing to have it during the day because I think we've had the public hearing, we've had the public a chance to vote on it. And I don't think it's, depending on what the EFC says, it's going to take that long. And I want to finalize it, so just in getting times. And we have until the 9th. I'm aware, Representative Aaron, yeah, you have a, you're going out of the, you're going to California, was it the 3rd?
Yes.
And because of the, and the Finance Committee meeting is this Friday, so frankly, I would like to meet again early next week to take a final vote on this, after the EFC had a chance to look it over and make its recommendation. And then we'll have their recommendation, the work group's recommendation, and then we'll hopefully take a vote, and it takes, going to take a two-thirds vote to pass. So if all 13 of us are here, it's going to take nine votes. I know this, so I don't know, is there any dates that are, any times that are out? I'm trying, I'll be as flexible as possible, like Monday, I could meet anytime, Monday, the 2nd.
I'm just the first.
The first is the first.
Okay, but you've got to, you're leaving the 3rd, is that correct? So basically, either the first or the 2nd, which is a Monday and Tuesday, are best for you. And I'm willing to meet anytime practically.
Tuesday is better for me.
Tuesday, all right.
Monday's better than Tuesday, but I could probably make Tuesday work. It's a family vacation, but we can do it via Zoom, I can try to participate by Zoom.
Okay, by Zoom, yeah, if you have a quorum, you can participate, Representative Merchant. Okay, what about, is there any, if I say... All right, I'm going to pick a date.
Pick a time, too.
I'm going to pick a time, and I'm going to make it during the daytime. Can we meet Tuesday, August 2nd, at 1:00 p.m.? Is that possible? And then we'll, the EFC meeting, we'll meet, hopefully we'll make a recommendation, and then we can study, and then we're going to meet again. And I don't expect, other than the minutes of this meeting, we're not going to have anything, I mean, if they're ready, take a vote, you know, maybe have a debate, brief debate of an hour or so, and hopefully get, take a vote one way or the other, and hopefully settle it one way or the other. Are we all in agreement for Tuesday, August 2nd, at 1:00 p.m., and we want to meet in the Commissioner's or the upstairs courthouse, is fine. Is there any objections? Anybody cannot make it. I will try to accommodate you.
I can't.
You, you can't?
No, I can do that today, but...
What's a good time that day, Representative Smith?
Earlier or later, because I have meetings probably from 11 to 3:00. So I could do it at 9:00.
Anybody object to 9:00? Is that too early? And as I said, it should only take about, I would think about an hour, because I think that...
Thank you very much.
Time, okay, so we'll meet at 9:00 at the Commission, or upstairs in the courthouse. And I appreciate everybody's forbearance. I know this has been a long, over a year. I'd like to take a vote, but I think we need to, one more time, do our, and the Executive Finance, since this is going to impact the budget, should do its due diligence as well. Yeah, was that...
For doing it in the morning, if I could, so I don't, with the family. Last year, I was able to do it from coast to main. Family was very forgiving. I would like to avoid that if I could. Is it possible to do it Monday at 9:00 o'clock instead of Tuesday?
Is anybody object to Monday, August 1st, at 9:00? Is it okay with you? Okay, so it sounds like everybody can make Monday, August 1st, at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I expect, hopefully, an hour, hour and a half, I, you know, hopefully it won't be that long. And hopefully, we'll take a vote one way or the other, and...
Let's just make it one way.
One way, yeah, one way. Well, I'm just, I try, I'm trying to be objective as a, I'm supposed to be, not show any bias. Of course, I do have my biases, so. Okay, so is anybody else, and, okay, so, and I plan to be at the EFC meeting on Friday at 10:00 a.m.
Me, too.
Okay, good, thank you, as... Yeah, well, the Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk are ex-official members anyways. I keep, you know, as I will remind you, Representative Golling. Okay, but Sir, I'm sorry, go ahead, yes, Manager Ferland.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I want to interrupt your meeting again. There is a related matter that I want to at least bring to the delegation's attention. There will need to be a supplemental appropriation for our FY '23 budget related to the bond. Two main expenses, one of them will be the administrative fees associated with the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank. To apply for the bond, it's going to be roughly $125,000. Also, there will be the first payment, if it's approved, it'll be an interest-only payment. It will happen in FY '23. So we don't have any funding in our current budget for those two items. So if, if possible, it'd be nice to get that supplemental appropriation approved at the same time that the bond vote is taken, assuming the bond vote is successful. However, comma, RSA 2414-A specifies the process for getting a supplemental appropriation processed, and it says there has to be a public hearing, doesn't specify how much notice is required. Our bond counsel has advised that a best practice is to do the seven-day notice, similar to the bonding public hearing, but it doesn't explicitly say that in RSA 2414. So there will be one of two outcomes. Either, when I speak to her tomorrow, I'll press her on the legality of having a public hearing with less than seven days' notice to allow the delegation to go ahead on the first...
On the first, yeah.
To get that done, and we'll, in the meantime, work on the estimates of what the fees will be that I mentioned earlier. If that is not suitable or not legally advisable, then we'll just have to have another meeting later in August, which I think is probably going to be doable.
Okay, let me be clear. If, let's say, we have this meeting and approve the bond vote, so we may have to come back for another meeting, but with the legality, if, let's say, the two-thirds of us, of the delegation approves it, it still will be legal, it's not going to run into any problems that you...
Yes, bond is completely separate. This is just for the matter of the supplemental appropriation. So if we want to try to kill two birds, make both things done in one meeting to avoid having to schedule another meeting...
Okay, and we, so we have to have a supplemental appropriation, assuming everything go, you know, it's approved, we're also going to have to meet again 30 days after that date, like we do the budget, like we did, we had to approve the minutes. Is that correct? I, I get...
That can be in the...
Okay, yeah, okay, I'm just...
Did I understand you say that we have to have a public hearing prior to the supplemental appropriation?
Yeah, 2414-A, yeah.
I don't care what number it is. But the, it seems to me we would have to have the hearing now in order to have a supplemental appropriation a week from now.
Well, it doesn't say how much notice that the, you have to have for the public hearing, and then you can have the vote anytime after the public hearing.
Oh, you could do it at that time, okay.
Okay, all right, so just keep me in the, you know, a draft, you know, because I want to look it over, and probably I bid the meeting Friday. You can update me, and I just, you know, want a draft and everything. So fine, if we have to do a public hearing, we'll do it, it'll be at night, but, you know, fine, if the public wants to come. I don't think...
The worst case is we have to have another meeting later in August. It's going to come down to your risk tolerance. Because bond counsel, I know, our lawyers think, she will say, "You really shouldn't do this without seven days' notice." And I would say, "Well, it doesn't say that in the RSA, so I think three days' notice would be sufficient."
Yeah, six days' notice.
That's why I'm not a lawyer.
Yes, Representative Tanner, please.
I'd like to ask, can you have that information for us?
For the EFC on Friday, what the, what that would be, and also the effect on the budget for next year as far as where we're going to get this money and...
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Am I correct, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That will, will, the $600,000 that we did not use in the last year, that should be available?
That's correct.
Right, and, but we will need more because there will be the bond counsel fee.
Correct. Yeah, we'll outline what all the different expenses will be and where we could identify some potential fund sources as well.
All right, anything else from the delegation, or anybody else? I think, oh, first of all, I want to thank Sugar River Valley Technical Center and NCTVA for the use of their room tonight, and especially John Wan. And that way, you know, we're keeping the public informed. So with that, unless anybody has anything, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Representative O'Hern, okay, Representative Merchant seconds that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.